All right, well, I guess we got started. Mrs. Federico is meeting the board at 7:05. Mrs. Federico had indicated she'd be a couple of minutes late, and I'm not sure. Had not heard from Mr. Whiskeman. Dr. Gregory and Mr. De Grego had indicated their inability to attend tonight. They're away. So. No, they're not together. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
.................................
Thank you. Okay, I'll open the meeting with public comment. Are there any members of the public here that wish to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to -- I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Feizer to address final questions regarding the budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Glennon. So, we wanted to just quickly go through the set of questions that came forward from the workshop last week, as well as a couple subsequent to the workshop. So, on Friday, we sent you responses to the questions that you had raised at the workshop that we were not able to answer. So, that's beginning with question number 39, which is page 11 of all of the questions. So, I don't know if we need to go through every one by detail, but, for example, the first one with respect to, you know, a legal opinion as to the exposure of the district and to the board relative to the whole issue around DDS. So, I spoke directly to Floyd Dugas, and he indicated that the only way that a board ever would be responsible for what happens on a budget is that if you knew that there were major issues in a board, or that money was missing, or that, you know, there was going to be this major shortfall, and you basically blatantly said to yourselves, "We're not going to do anything about this," then you could be held accountable. And he said that's happened so, so rarely. And so, when I -- and the issue around the DDS, he said, "The fact that you haven't been notified of anything specifically relative to your district," he said, "There's no way." He said, "You're operating in good faith. You've put a budget together in good faith. There is no exposure whatsoever for Board members."
Any questions on that?
Could we have it in writing?
Oh, we're kidding.
All right, thank you.
So, are the towns and cities that have students going to magnet schools, have been in Bridgeport allowed to limit the number of students? Actually, no, they are not. And the statute is quoted here, you know, "After accommodating the students participating districts in accordance with an approved enrollment agreement, an intradistrict magnet school operator that has unused student capacity may enroll directly into its program any interested students." Originally, when magnet schools were established, a limit could be. So, districts went into agreements with a magnet school saying, you know, 10 seats per grade level kind of thing. But the law then changed to that basically you can have an agreement, but if there's open seats, the agreement doesn't hold, and they can take a student from your district into the magnet school.
Questions on that?
Forty-one, we had talked about last week. Our coaches are part of the overall reduction, and we indicated that they are not, that we feel that the role of the coach, who works directly with teachers around their practice, is truly critical. And then, the issue of, you know, whether there should be greater equity in our use of coaches at the elementary level, given the difference in the size, or maybe the needs of the building. And we acknowledge that looking to next year, we need to do a better job at that. Right now, every school has a full-time, for example, literacy coach. But the reality is, is that there may be a building that has many more teachers, or a building that has greater needs, and so therefore, we should assign coaches based upon needs. Question on climbing walls. Actually, there was, you know, an error. And Mr. Burt, would you want to just address that?
Sure. I'll try to explain it as I stumbled through this last time. The budget book mentioned Meadowside, and then my answers in the Q and A last time, I mistakenly put Mathewsen. So, if the original budget book should read that we are proposing the installation of a new wall at Meadowside in this current budget. Our other two elementary schools that -- the other one that does not have one is Pumpkin Delight, and the one at Mathewsen is becoming something that we would need to replace soon, which is one of the originals installed years ago. And due to use, we would need to replace that. We're proposing both for Pumpkin and Mathewsen into next year budget, not for this current budget, our proposal. So, for 1718, we are looking for a new installation into Meadowside. I apologize for the confusion.
Any questions on that?
There were several questions around our computers, the replacement cycle, what the annual expenditures are, you know, and are we trying to keep very current with our computer technology? So, I'm going to ask Mr. Richatelli and Mr. Burt to address this.
Sure. Generally, the replacement cycle for our computers that are instructional computers that are in the classrooms is five years. In some cases where there's a smaller application, they can get a longer life cycle than five years. But generally, five years is the cycle. And then, computers that are for administrative clerical purposes get longer life cycles and are replaced as needed. The expenditures for the IT department and for our computers is generally broken down into two accounts, 3308, which is the management information systems. And I provided a description of what items come out of that account. And then, account 7350, which is the actual computer account, that's where we pay for scheduled replacement of computers and technology equipment. And we also take out of that account the lease agreements that we have for our schools. And I provided for you the budgeted amounts and the actual expended accounts for the last four years, including this budget and three years back. We have to answer any questions on that. And the last question, are we trying to keep current in our computer technology? And absolutely, yes. The IT department is -- they do an excellent job of keeping up to date, keeping all of our systems state-of-the-art. And we're appreciative of the board, because the board has provided those resources over the last several years for us to be able to continue to do that. So, thank you.
The last question in this set has to do with just identifying the federal -- I mean, the grants as federal or state-funded, and you can see they're broken out here. Most of them are federal grants, and then there are a few that are state grants.
Any questions on this?
And then, there were a few more questions that came in subsequent to the workshop. One has to do with, again, the reductions of the FTE. How are we going to make sure the classroom size is kept down to ensure that overcrowding does not become a problem? And so, we just want to reiterate, we talked about this at the last workshop. No staffing decisions have been made, and, you know, we will monitor class sizes. We really do try to make every effort to keep within the class size guidelines that are established by the board. We know that there are some real differences. If you look at even the existing classes right now, and some of that, quite frankly, is due to, we expected that we were going to get more -- an influx of students at Pumpkin and at Meadowside, which we have historically, which is something that we watch, and that did not happen this year. So, you see some richer class sizes than we would have had we known that we were not going to get that influx. But secondly, it becomes more difficult, quite frankly, with fewer students in each grade. You know, it's wonderful that we now are in K-5 schools, and we support that 100 percent. But you have fewer sections. So, you have in a grade level in a number of schools. So, if you have two sections, you know, so if 30 kids come in, well, you can't put them in one class, you put them in two classes, so that's 15 students. On the other hand, if you have, say, you know, in kindergarten, and you have 40 students, well, you're going to have two sections of 20 each. So, one school has 20 kids in a section for kindergarten, and another school has 15 or maybe 14 kids, just simply because of the numbers. And again, knowing now that we should not anticipate a huge influx into the two schools next year, because we didn't get them this year, unless it's a fluke, then we will be much more mindful in as far as how we assign those, the number of sections, the number of teachers that will be assigned to each grade level. And that will take place, quite frankly, we really do that in May. That's after kindergarten registration, and it's also, you know, presumably, we kind of have a really good handle, at least in May. Okay, where are we with respect to the existing grade levels and kind of moving forward, et cetera?
Any questions on that?
If I could just add, I think, you know, as the board moves into final adoption of our budget in May, we do tend to look at that again with some more concrete figures. But I know my experience and what I've heard discussed over the years is, you know, you're watching it all summer long, because there's always ins and outs over the summer. But some of it, you don't -- might not find out about them until after the class assignments have been declared to parents in the middle of August. Sometimes things happen the end of August, even after school has started. So, I know there's a lot of different variables that go into that piece.
Forty-six, why has there not been an effort to communicate the budget timeline with the community? So, I disagree a little bit about what's being inferred here. I think we have made a concerted effort. So, this citizens guide was updated by Kathy Benetti when we came back from the holidays, so that, for example, when I met with the parent advisory, which I met with them on January 5th, Thursday, the 5th, I gave each one of them a copy of this, and in it are all the dates of the board's presentation, each of the workshops. I talked with them about the board of finance, our presentation, went through all of this. And again, that was on the 5th of January. We also, this was put up on the website, and the link is there. So, that incorporates both the first and the second bullet there. I may -- I met with members of the press. I've been doing this now for the last -- for three years. So, we met with them on the 9th of January, which was the day that I presented to the board. And we give them a copy of the executive summary, a copy, which includes my letter, and then I go through the major pieces, and it's with the understanding, and the press have always honored this, that they would not release anything until 8 o'clock that evening. But that evening, on both the Milford Mirror and on the Patch, were, you know, were articles about the budget and the upcoming workshops, et cetera. So, that was another piece. We don't do robo-calls or school messengers around the budget, but we do in the upcoming news and events. So, here's an example of what was put in last week. So, this would have been on January 13th for the workshop that was going to take place, the two workshops that were going to be taking place, or I'm sorry, the workshop that would be taking place this week. And you can see, you know, that went out, and there is a quite a big percentage of parents that read that. That's something that's tracked. I would say close to 50 percent of our parents, or maybe people in the community are clicking on that weekly news and events piece. So.
Any questions on that? Okay.
And then, this last question, it was, is there a need also to make cuts to the administration in terms of, and supervisors and those who evaluate teachers? We have addressed that question in number 15 of your budget questions. No, we did not. We did not reduce administrators in this particular budget. It's actually not 15, that's an error. So, I'm not sure where that is.
Well, I think it was included in.
Yep. It's the part of it is the operating of 14 buildings, which requires more staffing, quite frankly, than if there were fewer than 14 buildings. You know, so we made a decision not to do that in this budget moving forward. Yeah, I'm just going to simply say that the more buildings you have, the more administrative costs that you're going to have.
Any questions on that?
And then, there was one other request that came through, and that was in light of the issue of, that we all talked about last week around the Department of Developmental Services and the opinion that was granted by the Attorney General, George Jepson, around whether DDS, that's the acronym, is required to pay for residential placement of students, which they do now. The opinion was that, no, they are not obligated by law. And this is stemming from the budget cuts, the budget challenges on the state level. So, we were informed by the commissioner that we could expect that the Department of Developmental Services may, underscore may, place the burden of residential placement costs onto districts, and that they were going to go through and look at students on a case-by-case basis. So, what we were asked to do is to draft a statement that would address that caveat, so to speak, and include it in our budget letter. So, we did, we created a draft, and so we'll just pass those out. So, I don't know, Mrs. Glennon, if you want it read out loud, or if you want to have people just read it individually?
Let us just give us a minute to read it individually, and.
Sure.
I did. He didn't see this final version, but I did, you know, ask him specifically what he thought. Would it be appropriate for us to include a statement in here? I indicated that, you know, what this was coming from with respect to the fact that, you know, we do have students who are in residential placements, and so we may, you know, incur additional costs, but we have no knowledge of it, et cetera. And he said it was totally appropriate for us to prepare a statement if that was the choice of the board.
Ms. Federico.
The first question that would come to mind if I were city board member receiving this letter is, is it possible to put a dollar amount on here, or was it left off intentionally?
So, we consciously left it off because the big -- and we consciously left it off because it's certain cases. So, it could be one case, it could be more than one, and so there's a real difference then with respect to costs. The other thing is, is we chose not to put the number of students also, because we simply don't want to -- it's a small number of students, and we don't want this focus in on, well, who are the kids who are in residential placements kind of thing?
Right.
That was just our perspective.
Is this included in one of the grants on our -- that's provided in our budget book?
No, no. This would not be grant. But you want to explain that, how that works with respect to the residential cost being picked up by DDS?
Oh, I'm sorry, I remember now. They pay direct?
Correct.
The state pays direct? Okay, thank you.
I think the number is subject to change as well. I mean, it's could change. And I think that, you know, if this is made, you know, to be like an addendum to Dr. Feizer's letter that's in the front of the budget book, but I would expect it would come up in discussion during the budget presentations. Mr. Jagosinski?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, not having a dollar figure. Why this is a concern is that it could exceed $1 million. And I think it's very important that the Board of Finance and the Board of Alderman realize that we have a, you know, potential risk of that magnitude. It could be substantially smaller, it may not come to pass. But, you know, I think that they should be aware of the magnitude of it, just like we're debating, you know, and we're concluding we shouldn't include anything in the budget. Maybe the Board of Finance would say, you know, "It's not worth the risk, given what's going on in the state." And I think we need to be clear, you know, what we think, you know, the potential risk is. We're not saying it's over $1 million, but, you know, that's a huge number. If that comes down on us, it's going to have a significant impact, either on the city in terms of coming up with additional funding, or on the students in terms of cutting back services.
Right, right. And, you know, again, we're not trying to, you know, cover anything up, et cetera. We're trying to be sensitive to the fact that it's a small population and to the volatility of, so, you know, one student that moves tomorrow is no longer our responsibility. You know, if DDS says, "Well, it's student A, yes, you're going to have to pay for, nobody else you're going to have to pay for," well, then it's nowhere near $1 million. It's much, much less. So, that was the other reason why. Again, it's the board's choice as to whether or not to include that information. It's not a desire not to, you know, to hide anything. It's just, it's that figure, but -- and that's part of the reason why, when I tell you, we have been, we have, you know, sought more concrete information from so many different avenues, you know. Actually, I asked Attorney Dugas, I said, you know, "Can you, as the attorneys of a number of districts, gather, see if you can find out any information, just as a, you know, you're representing a number of districts?" No, you know, they found out nothing. We spoke with CAE, but, you know, we were in touch with CAPS, you know, Jim Richatelli, you know, was in touch with CASBO. It's just so this information came out, and we're all just sitting, waiting. We're waiting. And I think, I'm hoping it'll become clearer when the governor's budget comes forward, but it may not.
You know, I think you've done the right thing, and I think your recommendation that, you know, we not include it in the budget is the correct thing. I just want to make sure that both the Board of Finance and the Board of Alderman understand the magnitude of the potential risk.
I would expect, my experience with the Board of Finance and the Board of Alderman is that they really do go through the budget with a fine tooth to comb, and I would be surprised if they didn't ask the question. And certainly, I think, you know, it's information that would be shared with them. And I think it would be, from my perspective, more appropriate to quantify it in person during a conversation versus putting the number in the book, because we just simply don't know what it, you know, we know it could be up to, you know, or, but we don't even know what it could be up to, because, you know, it could end up, there could be more students. We just do not know what it could be up to. And without any definitive information, I, I don't know, I'm okay with this the way it is, and I have no problem with including it in the budget book. And I think, you know, it serves the purpose of expressing our concern of the unknown. But, Ms. Federico.
May I offer a suggestion that is perhaps a compromise? In the letter, perhaps we could just mention that the cost could potentially be significant, but we don't know what the costs are. But if we mention at least that it could be significant, then I think that raises enough attention to it that we're bringing it up because it's significant. And while that may be inferred, we wouldn't bring it up if it wasn't significant. I think perhaps putting that in the letter and then speaking to the numbers, which, as Mrs. Glennon said, I'm sure you'll have to do. Is that my last?
I would be, if we put the significant statement, I'd be agreeable with that.
I agree with that, yeah. Did you have a thought as to where you wanted to insert that?
Perhaps in the second paragraph, the second full paragraph, not indented, "The Milford Public Schools has a small number of students in residential placements that are currently paid for by DDS," a sentence right after that.
So, the costs picked up by DDS are significant? Is that what you're suggesting?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, Ms. Krucinski.
Perhaps where it says, "The board spent considerable amount of time on its potential obligation to fund the cost of residential placements, comma, which may be financially significant for special education students." I don't know if that makes that sentence run on, but I was not an English major.
I agree with that.
Does that read well to you, Dr. Feizer? The board spent a considerable amount of time on its potential obligation to fund the cost of residential placements for special education students, comma, which may be significant, which is the, should go before the phrase for special ed students or after? You can decide.
I think it would go after the students, because they're placements for special education students, which may be significant.
And then, in light of the letter from the Commissioner of Education. Is everybody okay with that?
Okay, so this will be, I'll take off the top, and just on my letter, I'm going to put, I don't know, I'm not an expert as a secretary, but just put "addendum" at the bottom of my letter, and then this will be the page that will be, it'll just say "addendum." Is that correct? Would that be correct?
Is this script intended to make that call? Okay, is the board okay with that? Are there any other final questions or clarifications that we need to go over? Ready to vote?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to offer a comment before we vote. Or are we going to do that?
Well, we'll have a motion and then our final discussion.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Feizer, do you have a motion?
I do. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approve the superintendent's proposed 2017-2018 budget as presented in the amount of $92,336,582, and direct the administration to send it to the mayor.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Federico has a second discussion. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to commend the administration once again. I feel like I'm going to repeat myself from last year, but once again, I think you've done an excellent, serious job with this budget. When I, I like to look at it from the big changes, and I see that we start off with 1.1 million in contractual salary increases. You have 350,000 in increase in medical benefits, which is contractual. And I'm using round numbers here, they may not tie exact to what's in the book. You have increases for tuition in special education and magnet schools, that again, you know, not necessarily in our control, that's 500,000. We've chosen to invest in the school system with the improvements and enhancements that are in your letter around the career pathways and a few other things, plus the security and safety enhancements, and that total's about 250. When I add those up, I get about 2.2 million dollars. And I believe that some administrators would stop there and say, we have a 2.2 million dollar budget increase. These are the things that are in it, there's really not much we can do about it. But you were able to find savings in utilities, 140,000 or so. You dug in to the enrollment numbers and said, honestly, if we have declining enrollment, we are going to need to make some adjustments in the number of teachers, and hopefully, that can be done through attrition. I know that's usually what happens. And then, you know, you could have still had a budget at that point with an increase of about 1.1 million dollars. And a lot of people would have stopped there. But you dug in further, and you looked at educational supplies, and you said, what do we really need? And, you know, I think I understood from you that hearing about so many advantages, so many ways where we can take advantage of technological advancement, and as a result, you were able to save in the traditional educational supplies another 400,000 dollars, bringing us down to an increase of 760. And I just have to say that, you know, I think you have done, and you continue to do a tremendous job, and we can all see that you take this very seriously, you put a lot of time and thought into it, and you don't just roll over numbers. So I appreciate that. One other comment that I just want to offer as I look through the budget book, and I focused a little bit on that, one of those last pages about grants. So we do have 3.3 million dollars coming into our budget in federal and state grants. And I think that we cannot do anything about that in the budget, per se, but I think we all need to be cognizant, and we need to make sure that the city and the public are cognizant that anything could happen with those grants in the future. You know, we could be looking at cuts somewhere down the road, and we just need to have that in the back of our minds, because that would certainly be out of our control if something were to happen there. But, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have a motion for adjournment.
Okay.
Can I just want to go? Second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we are adjourned.